Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 25th. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings will be held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we're calling this meeting to order, and Krista, if you'd like to call the role, please.
Yes, Councilmember Solis.
Yeah.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartzell.
Here.
Councilmember Hartzell.
President.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Prokhorov Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Present.
You have a firm, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. If everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Next is approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you, Regan. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Some moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. First up is public communication, and we have a legislative report from Holly and Brianna joining us. So, welcome, Holly and Brianna. Thank you both very much for being here tonight, and I will turn it over to you. I don't think it's turned on. I think there's a...
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Holly.
Yes, no worries. I am Holly Cochi, and joining remotely this evening is Brianna Murray. I hope hopefully you can see her little face on the screen. We are the city's state lobbyists and serve as your eyes, ears, and voice in Olympia. So, thank you for having us here today. Our goal for this evening is to provide you all with a quick recap of the legislative process and what we expect to arise in the upcoming 2023 session. And our hope is that what we share with you will provide you with the context you all need as you consider the city's draft legislative priorities and policy document that's before you and that Regan will walk through later this evening. So, starting with first with what we can expect during the 2023 session. You'll recall that the legislature operates on a two-year cycle, and 2023 will mark the beginning of the 2023-25 biennium. It's the first year of the biennium, meaning it will be a long session, beginning on January 9th and lasting 105 consecutive days. During a long session, the legislature has two primary tasks. The first is to develop and adopt operating capital and transportation budgets for the 2023-25 biennium. And once adopted, the budgets will become effective July 1st of 2023. And then in the 2024 session, when they meet for a short 60-day session, they will make any amendments to those biennial budgets. So, in addition to developing those three biennial budgets, the legislature will devote much of their time considering and adopting policy bills. Traditionally, we see a few thousand bills introduced per session and about 300 to 400 bills that actually make it through the legislative process and signed into law by the governor. And as far as politics go, the upcoming November elections will be formative. There were over 25 legislators who chose to not seek reelection for the positions they are currently holding, so two being from the 47th that are not seeking reelection. And I'll just note that former Representative Pat Sullivan recently resigned as representative, and he will be joining the governor's office as the senior policy advisor for labor. This large number of open seats means there will be a significant number of new state legislators, regardless of political party. It's hard to predict what will come of the elections, but based on the August primary results, Democrats are likely to maintain the majority in the state senate and house, although there's still a possibility that the Republicans could gain the majority in either chamber or one or the other. Following the November elections, the majority party will establish the legislative committee structures, which includes who will be committee chairs, who will be in leadership positions within their caucuses, and then the minority party will then determine committee assignments following the majority party's structure. And those decisions will be made by the end of November, and the legislature is scheduled to meet at end of November, early December, on what they call assembly days to start their legislative work. And bills will begin being prefiled just right around the corner in December, so it's coming up. So, with that general legislative information and background in mind, I will hand it over to Brianna, virtually, to provide some context on the capital and transportation budgets, which relate to the city's possible funding requests for this session, as well as two policy issues that we have continued to engage in and expect to have significant dialogue on during the 2023 session. So, I'll hand it over to Brianna.
Thank you, Holly, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to present to you virtually this evening. So, the next three slides are really background information to help inform your discussion later this evening on your draft legislative agenda. And per usual, the draft legislative agenda does include some Covington-specific funding requests. Our funding requests are focused typically within the capital budget and the transportation budget. The capital budget is each year right around $3 to $4 billion. It is funded with bonds that are paid back by a percentage of the operating budget, and so it does require the state issuing bonds each biennium. And as a result, it is oftentimes a bipartisan budget. To issue bonds, the legislature needs supermajority approval from each chamber, making it a traditionally bipartisan effort. The capital budget funds a whole series of grant programs that fund bricks and mortar construction throughout the state, but also funds what's called the local and community projects bucket, which is a nicer way of saying earmarks. The capital budget this year is expected to be robust. The size of the capital budget depends on the previous four years of operating budgets, and those have been rather significant. Even if there is a recession between now and the beginning of the legislative session, the capital budget will be smaller as a result of that, but not significantly smaller because it is averaged out over those four years. While it will be robust, there are many demands. The state agencies have all submitted their needs for capital improvements, and they far outweigh the available $4 billion in revenue. So, it is always a competitive process, but nothing unusual about this biennium's capital budget compared to other years. The transportation budget has gone through some significant changes in recent years. In the last legislative session earlier this year, the legislature adopted the Move Ahead Washington Transportation Package. In that package, the legislature really made the decision that our transportation budget is not going to exclusively be funded with the fuel tax any longer, that it will also be funded through Climate Commitment Act revenues that are generated through the state's New Cap and Invest system. Those new revenues that are coming in were estimated as part of the development of that package, and now that that program is up and running, are expected to be more than anticipated, so there will be an extra revenue available within the transportation budget. However, it's a big however. Those Climate Commitment Act dollars are restricted in what they can be used for, and they're designed to be dedicated on active transportation or transit or bike-ped investments. So, very limited availability in the transportation budget for roadway improvements, a little bit more capacity for bike-ped and transit improvements. Next slide. Another item we wanted to provide you with some background on was around public safety. And there's two topics that we're anticipating will get robust discussion this next session. The first is around the crime of possession of controlled substances. Just a bit of background, in 2021, the Washington State Supreme Court invalidated the statute that makes the possession of controlled substances a felony. The statute did not indicate that a mens rea element or an intent element, and the Supreme Court therefore found it to be unconstitutional. That decision came right in the middle of the 2021 legislative session. The legislature responded by enacting a temporary policy that requires an officer to provide an individual with two referrals to substance use treatment programs prior to arresting them for possession of controlled substances. And if and when that arrest occurs, the arrest would be for a misdemeanor rather than a felony. There's been relatively few arrests statewide because it's been difficult for officers to track the two referrals to treatment. That temporary policy expires in July of 2023. The legislature did create a Substance Use and Recovery Services Committee to make recommendations to them on this policy. They're referred to as the SIRSHA Committee. The SIRSHA Committee is expected to recommend a full decriminalization of possession of controlled substances. That is what I would describe as one end of the spectrum. On the other end of the spectrum is reinserting the word knowingly into the statute or inserting the word knowingly into the statute and reinstituting it as a felony. The middle ground area that seems to be emerging is one where officers would have the ability to arrest for possession of controlled substances, and through the court processes would be those individuals would be diverted into treatment options. So, at a high level, that is a breakdown of the legislative discussion, and there are legislators emerging all along that spectrum. The second public safety issue that will receive significant discussion is around vehicular pursuits. In 2021, the legislature changed the standard by when an officer can engage in vehicular pursuits from reasonable suspicion to probable cause, meaning they must have a greater amount of evidence before engaging in a vehicular pursuit. The 2022 legislature considered but did not pass legislation rolling back that standard back to reasonable suspicion, and we're expecting the legislature to pick up that debate again in 2023 and look at the language between reasonable suspicion and probable cause. Moving on to another hot topic that we're expecting a lot of discussion on is housing. During the 2022 session, we saw legislation introduced that would have mandated that cities allow middle housing types in all areas of the city. The Association of Washington Cities strongly oppose that legislation, and the city expressed concerns with that legislation directly. However, it is coming back in the 2023 session and seems to have a lot of momentum. I'd also note that there are several cities that started occurring last session. There are several cities that have indicated support for this proposal. So, the city family collectively in the Association of Washington Cities is finding themselves increasingly divided on this issue. The AWC has convened a Housing Solutions Work Group to try and foster a middle ground or compromise, and recommendations out of that work group are anticipated to come in December. And I would just note, as I mentioned, there's a lot of momentum behind this proposal. Different from last year, the lieutenant governor has issued a report indicating that housing is the number-one reason or obstacle toward economic growth within the state, and that is providing a lot of momentum behind the middle housing proposals. So, with that as background on the budgets, public safety, and housing, I will turn it back over to Holly.
Thanks, Brianna. So, before we wrap, that was a lot to absorb, so I promise I don't have much left. Before we wrap up, I want to quickly go over the legislative agenda's structure and its purpose, so it's fresh in your mind for your discussion later this evening. The legislative agenda is really broken out into two parts. The first document being the city's top priorities, which really provides Brianna, myself, and the legislative delegation direction on the items the city is wanting to be hyper-focused on, and that will require the bulk of our efforts and attention during a very fast-paced session. The city's top priorities should include the items that either heavily depend upon Covington's leadership and voice in order to move forward. So, for example, the city's funding request for SoCo Park or the water quality project for Pipe Lake. These projects are specific to Covington, and if the city is not prioritizing them, no one will. Top priorities can also include issues the city has taken a special interest on, and oftentimes, it's issues that we know the legislature will have robust conversations around, and the city wants to be a part of that dialogue. The second document includes both policy or budget-related issues that the city may provide feedback on or weigh in on during the legislative session, but they do not rise to the level of the legislative priorities. And oftentimes, many of these items are supported by other cities, like the Association of Washington Cities. There's a coalition behind it, and we are part of that mission, but not necessarily taking the lead. So, hopefully, that quick breakdown of the two different aspects of the agenda can help as you review it this evening. And after you've had the opportunity to review the agenda, provide us with any feedback you may have, and the agenda is approved and finalized, the next task is for Brianna and I to schedule time to brief the 47th Legislative Delegation. And we'll also take this opportunity to learn more about the Legislative Delegation, what their goals are for the 2023 session, and what areas the city and the delegation can work together to accomplish for the Covington community. And before you know it, it's session, and it begins on January 9th, which is right around the corner, and you can find Brianna and I in the halls of the Capitol basically at every hour of the day. So, Brianna, do you have anything to add before I wrap up? No? Okay. Are there any questions?
Hi. Thank you very much for this. It's been great. I just want to confirm that we can assume that session will be in session. Everybody's there on person, in-person, office hours, business as usual, pre-COVID?
Yeah, so we are expecting most things to be in person. There's kind of mixed answers right now whether they will still provide a virtual or remote aspect to their committee meetings so that people can testify remotely, but otherwise, they want the legislative delegates, they want the legislators there, and they want us and the public to be there as well. Brianna, do you have any additional thoughts on that?
No, I think the other thing, just as you all are thinking about trips down to Olympia, I am anticipating new measures around crowd control, and then also the Erv New House Building as one of the primary buildings on the Capitol campus is going to be torn down, and a new building will be constructed there, and some legislators' offices will be in portables located in parking lots. So, we are anticipating some differences from a typical pre-pandemic session, but that everything will be in person.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Couple of questions. Thanks, Holly and Brianna. Appreciate this. So, the elections are in November, and the session starts in January. The 47th is going to have at least two new members. And you said prebills can be put in in December. When do our legislators take, when do they officially get sworn in? And will we be behind a little bit with those two new members?
I don't think we will necessarily be behind. I mean, there are going to be many districts that are in the same boat as we are. And in regards to our connections with those who are running right now, we've offered a meeting and have had tours with five out of six of them, and it's been great, and we've been able to connect with them. So, we've already started that relationship building. And as for legislative-wise, we have one item on our agenda that may require a bill to be introduced, and I don't think we will be slowed down by any means because of a new Legislative Delegation. If anything, they're often more eager to help and want to get going and hit the ground running. Brianna, do you?
And just to more pointedly, they get sworn in on January 9th, the beginning of the legislative session, and the bills start to be prefiled December 1st. They will have the ability to participate in that prefiling action. All the bills that are prefiled starting on December 1st are not officially filed or introduced into the legislative process until that first day of the legislative session on January 9th. Usually, the prefiling process is just an opportunity for legislators to get their proposals out to stakeholders and made publicly available sooner rather than waiting until January 9th.
And then my second question, which you kind of answered already, but you know, we have the benefit of having Pat for a number of years, so he had seniority. We're now kind of going back to square one. Is there a strategy or thoughts on how we address the fact that we no longer have seniority in the 47th? How are we going to, what are we going to do about that?
Brianna, I'll let you leave this question. I've been taking over.
Sure, sure. So, I mean, you're spot-on. Covington has been incredibly fortunate to have legislators in leadership over the years, and you know, I think that legislators who don't hold leadership roles still very effectively advocate and represent their communities, and so that's what we're likely to be working with. Over time, our legislators can certainly find themselves in a position of leadership, and we can support them in their endeavors to reach that leadership strategy. And also, those leadership positions. I'd also note that the 47th continues to be a swing district. There continues to be a lot of statewide attention on the 47th Legislative District with curiosity toward whether it will lean more Republican or more Democrat, and that attribute is likely to lead to more legislative successes than safe districts.
Anybody else? Holly, Brianna, thank you so much for being here tonight, but also thank you so much for representing our city during session and outside session. We are represented very well by you, both.
Thank you. Appreciate the time. Thanks.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Next up is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW 42.178.555, campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. Before I call on anybody, also, we do have three public hearings later on tonight. So, if you're here to speak about the revenue sources, property tax revenues, or the Fugitive Town Regional Fire Authority, or the Kent School District, save your comments till that time, and we will call on you at that time. I'll start with anybody here in present. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Seeing nobody there, is there anybody online wishing to address council this evening? Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of our meeting. Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C1 through C7.
Some of...
Been moved by Jennifer and seconded by Christina to approve the consent agenda, item C1 through C7. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next, we will move into our first of three public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding the 2023 revenue sources and possible increase in property tax revenue. This being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance with the state and local law, the public hearing is hereby declared open. And I will turn this over to Casey.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Nice to see you all in person. My first time back, so it's pretty exciting. I'm going to share my screen so that I can walk through the presentations for folks.
See, is your home for some reason? There we go. Okay. So, this is the first of three public hearings that we'll have on the budget. This first one specifically is on revenue sources and property taxes. So, I will walk you through the revenue sources. So, the very first one that we go over is our beginning fund balance, and it's kind of fancy accounting term, but what it means specifically is, if you're thinking of, it's the previous year's budget, and it's your revenues over your expenses. So, let's say I have $100 left over at the end of the year that I get to roll forward to the next year and reappropriate and reuse those sources. So, those are our beginning fund balances that we start with. And then, one of our major revenue sources is our property taxes, and I'll be going into those a little bit more detail on another attachment, just to kind of cue that up. Our property taxes are one of our largest sources of revenue for the city. The city, as we normally do budgets for what state law allows, which is the 1% increase. And I will mention, I will go over it again in the other attachment, but the maximum levy that we can do is the $3,174,537, and we just got an update from the county, so it's about $10,000 higher than that. But that also includes your bank capacity that you had from last year. So, they give us our maximum levy that we can do. So, that takes into account any bank capacity that we have, plus this year's 1%, plus any new construction. So, that's what's included in that $3,174. And just for anybody that's not familiar with the term of bank capacity, what that is, is last year, we decided not to take our 1% increase in property taxes. And what the county does is they kind of hold those for us, and in the future, if we choose to take that 1%, we can go back and take that 1%. So, that number includes the 1% from last year, the 1% from this year, plus new construction from this year. Doesn't mean we have to take that 1% from last year, but that's our maximum levy. That's what's included. And again, I have another spreadsheet number one. I will walk you through that. So, again, for 2023, our maximum levy is the $3,174, and our assessed value is a little over almost $4.5 billion, which includes that 61 million of new construction I was mentioning, and our estimated levy rate is just at about 71 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. And I will mention that our assessed value jumped from 2022 to 2023 by 22.7%, and that's the highest increase we've had in assessed value since we finished it. So, really big increase. And also, just for folks if this is new, the way that it works, property taxes work in the state of Washington is you can kind of think of it like a teeter-totter. So, as your levy rate goes up, our assessed value goes up, the levy rate goes down. So, technically, other than that 1%, you shouldn't see that much of an increase from our jurisdiction for your property taxes. It's just inverse. So, for sales taxes, again, this is another one of our major revenue sources. So for sales taxes, again, this is another one of our major revenue sources. Uh, sales taxes are collected and distributed two months later. So if we collect sales taxes in January, we don't see those revenues coming until March, so there's a two month delay. So for unrestricted sales taxes for twenty twenty-three, which are reflected in the graph that I'll scroll down to here in a second. We're at five point seven five million dollars, which is just a minor decrease of three point four uh, percent. And that's just us budgeting conservatively, just hoping construction doesn't drop a little, but just giving us a little bit of wiggle room there in just in case it does. And then we also have a couple of restricted sales taxes, uh, we have one that is from HB fourteen oh six. And we're uh, hoping to bring in a little bit over forty-five thousand dollars. And what that is um, being used for currently is our fine maple place for low income rent. And then we also have HB fifteen ninety, which is another restricted sales tax that we're estimating, we're bringing in a little over seven hundred thousand dollars next year. Or excuse me, six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars next year. And that one is currently being used for, um, can be used for affordable housing, housing related services and behavioral treatment. And that is where Darren, our new um, mental, I don't, mental health professional, I'm not sure if that's his. Okay, community care specialist, excuse me, is uh, currently being paid for, so um, that's a great addition to the city this year. And then just our sales tax rate is eight point seven percent, so this gives you an idea how it breaks down. And here's our graph, just what we're projecting and the different categories that we're projecting. So you can see that retail is our biggest category. So utility taxes, along with the property taxes and sales taxes are our, that's our third major revenue source for the city. We charge it for um, they're imposed on utilities such as electricity, natural gas, solid waste, cable, telephones, storm drainage and cell phones. We have two separate rates, so our solid waste cable and storm drainage are at eight percent. And the rest, electricity, natural gas, telephones and cell phones are at six percent. And we're estimating bringing in about two point five million dollars next year. Justice, um, we have a seven hundred thousand dollars that we receive for criminal justice sales tax. And this is a sales tax that the county actually levies, but then they distribute a portion of it to the city based on population. So we receive some of those funds annually. Our T V D fees, we have our twenty dollar vehicle license fee that currently goes into the street funds. Um, sole purpose of those funds are to construct and fund the transportation improvements within the city. We currently use it for maintenance within the street funds and our revenue estimate for next year is about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's currently down a little bit from previous years, D L has given us a lower vehicle count for next year. Um, so I'm tracking that to see if that actually needs to realize. Uh, real estate excise tax, we have two quarter percent increase or two quarter percent that we receive. Um, from the sales of real estate. This is, uh, have been a great source of revenue in the last few years, we've had some record distributions that we received. Enough to make it so we will not have to um, hit the general fund up for any transfer for the debt service finance. I've got enough to pay for all of next year with the refunds that we currently have. So we're estimating next year bringing in about nine hundred thousand dollars and um. That, like I said, will be able to pay for the debt service and it currently pays for the Public Works Trust Fund loan and it pays for the uh, twenty sixteen refunded bonds. Property tax expansion levy, uh, this is currently um, uh, property tax levy that's used to improve the parks and trails. And uh, this is a dedicated revenue source that even is able to use for some of those park projects, like Soco, Jenkins Creek Park. And we're currently estimating about a hundred and forty-one thousand. And I'll get into kind of licenses and permits, um, solid waste administration, we receive some funds from our public services. Our estimated revenue is a little over ninety-eight thousand dollars for next year. I have an annual CPI increase, so that's included. Our business licenses are collected within the general fund, we have an annual fee of sixty-five dollars and we're estimating about a hundred and thirteen thousand. Our cable TV franchise fees, which are applied to the street fund and help with street maintenance, are currently budgeted for two hundred and sixty. We'll get into some building permits and um, other user fees that are based on the building permit revenues for Development Services Fund. And for twenty twenty-three, we're estimating a little over a million dollars and. Based on seven five new single family permits that we're anticipating, as well as commercial fees and use fees. But the residential or generally are big ticket items. Then we have some real minor permits and licenses, just a little over six thousand dollars for sign permits and pebbles permits. You can see a little bit of volatility that we've, we've seen in the building permits issued through this year, uh, really a dip from last year. And we're hoping those pop up next year. And we have some intergovernmental revenues that we receive and some state shared revenues that we get from the state. Uh, the first one is liquor excise taxes, um, we receive a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, it's based on per capita. And we receive that money importantly, we also receive another portion from liquor, it's liquor board profits. And to be eligible, to be eligible to use these revenues, we have to dedicate at least two percent of the distribution to an improved alcoholism or drug addiction. Program, and we handle that through the human services side, um, through some of our provider contracts. In twenty twenty-three, we estimate we're going to bring in about a hundred and sixty-two thousand. We also receive some income from the marijuana excise taxes, per capita estimate, and next year we're, we're hoping to receive about eighty-one thousand dollars. And then we have criminal justice, some shared revenues that we receive from the state that are based on the capital distribution as well. And we're hoping to receive eighty thousand dollars next year. And then a big revenue source we've got coming next year is the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, that's quite novel. But you may uh, recognize that it's the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And we're recognizing two point nine million dollars of that next year. And we actually recognize two point nine million dollars of that this year. And those funds are currently being used for public safety, small business grants and utility. We have some recycling grants that we receive annually in the amount of about seven nine thousand dollars. And that helps the city encourage recycling and offer events in the spring and fall of every year. And we also coordinate the events for the city meaningful values, to be a black diamond. And then for the street funds, another portion of revenue that they receive is the motor vehicle fuel tax, that uh, this is a major revenue source for that fund. And next year, we're anticipating bringing in about four hundred and ten thousand dollars to help with maintenance and street funds. And again, a big number that we've been very fortunate to receive is some grant funding that's in our capital investment program fund. For twenty twenty-three, for our street projects and park projects, we're anticipating bringing in over nineteen million dollars of um, grant funding from several different agencies. Alright, so for charges for goods and services, this is another category of revenue that we receive. We have interfund service payments and overhead. And we have two different types of overhead payments that we have, the first being a central services overhead. That is uh, basically, you can think of it as our, as our lease payment, bottled water, liability insurance, coffee. All, anything that doesn't um, belong in one department is put into this one main department and then we spread it amongst the city. So it's actually a direct um, reduction of the expenditure in the general fund. So as the street fund pays it, it just reduces what the general fund is responsible for, so there's no revenue reported. It's just an offset of the expenditure. Where there is revenue reported is we have an interfund service payment. And that is each fund's share of the assistance that they receive from the executive department, finance, legal and personnel offices. So those general fund activities are charged to the other fund type, like the street fund, development services fund and the swim fund. So they pay their portion of the processing. We have some park user fees, and these are the fees that are collected from the aquatic center, athletics and recreation programs. Things for baseball, soccer, like football, volleyball, things like that. Our revenues are estimated a little over one point one million dollars for next year. And then in the development services fund, along with the permits that were included in the other categories, they also have some land use inspection, engineering, these things of that nature. And we're estimating those coming in a little over seven hundred and three thousand each year. We also collect impacted mitigation fees in our capital investment program fund. These are one-time charges against a new development project to help pay for new expanded public facilities. And next year, we anticipate bringing in about one point three million dollars. So for the surface water management funds, this is their main revenue source. The, they have a drainage utility fee that they collect, um, it's charged on the property tax statement, the county collects it on behalf. Next year, we're anticipating bringing in three point nine million dollars. And I will mention that next year is the last year of the utility rate study that was adopted. So there was a built-in increase through two twenty twenty-three, and that is the last year of the increase currently, that will be coming back. So for unemployment charges, um, we're set up a little bit differently than a lot of other entities and cities where we're a reimbursable employer. And what that means is uh, on each paycheck, I hang on to all of those unemployment funds, I don't actually send them to the state. The only time I send them to the state is when somebody makes a claim, then they can bill me, then I'll give them the money. So I hang on to that until I'm asked for it. So next year, we anticipate collecting about ninety thousand dollars, that's just through our payroll deductions. And then we have equipment charges in their equipment replacement funds. And what those are is we buy a vehicle and that vehicle goes to the department and then they kind of. We sit back from us and we put that money away to replace it next time you need a vehicle. So we're always putting funds away to replace them. So for next year, we're going to be collecting two hundred and sixty-six thousand from those departments that will be using this year. Fines and forfeitures, um, we have our district court fees, false alarms and just some miscellaneous fines that the city collects. Uh, for our district court fees, those are charged through King County for its court services. And as part of our agreement, King County receives a hundred percent of the revenues to do those uh, services for us. As well as billing us later in the year, it doesn't quite cover what um, how, how those services are charged. So it's going to be about fifty-four thousand dollars that we'll receive in revenue. And I anticipate I will probably be charged about another hundred, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the county to provide those court services to us. We just have a few miscellaneous fees and then I can wrap it up for technology surcharge. This is the, these things are charged on the issuance of every permit that goes through development services. And it's to help offset I T costs or improving system upgrades and things of that nature. Uh, we anticipate bringing in thirty-six thousand dollars next year. And then we have some miscellaneous park user fees, these are locker rentals, pool rentals, concessions, things of that nature. And we anticipate bringing in about a hundred and fourteen thousand. And then lastly, just our interest income. And this is just based on our annualized twenty twenty-two data, economic outlook and just the assumption that fund balances. Available for investing will be at the same level that they currently are. And to citywide, I anticipate bringing in almost about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So those are the revenue sources, and then I just want to spend a few minutes just going again over the property taxes and just showing you how that's looking for next year. And you should have seen, and I put an amended um, attachment on your desk there. And I highlighted, I have a typo there where the levy was, and I'll walk you through what that is. So again, like I mentioned, the very first number, the twenty twenty-two levy amount, that three million ninety-two thousand two sixty-eight, that's our maximum levy amount. And that includes what we levied last year, plus the one percent from last year, less the one percent from this year. That, that's what's included, um, sorry, the one percent from last year is included in that three million ninety-two thousand. Then the one percent from this year is on the next line, so that's the thirty thousand nine twenty-three. And then we have our new construction, that's the fifty-one three forty-six, and then we have some re levies from prior year's refunds. And what those are is people can petition to have their assessed value looked at and uh, they may get a refund. And then we're allowed to re levy that refund and spread it amongst all the residents and kind of recruit that. So our maximum property tax levy for next year could be three million one hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and fifty million dollars. Again, that doesn't mean it has to be, that's just if we were capturing all the bank capacity, plus our one percent this year, plus the new construction. And I'll be bringing this back for um, adoption at the end of November when property tax levels are due and we can decide what the council would prefer to do then. Uh, like I mentioned, our assessed value is four point, almost four point five billion, twenty-two point seven percent increase. Our estimated levy rate is point seven one zero five six, and that's for a thousand dollars of assessed value. And I'm just kind of walking through this table here what this means. So for twenty twenty-two, you can see what our assessed value was, it was the three point six billion. For twenty twenty-three, it's the almost four point five billion, again, the twenty-two point seven percent increase. The tax levy there, the three million fifty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-one, that's what we actually levied last year, since we didn't take that one percent. We did not levy the three million ninety-two thousand two sixty-eight that's at the top. We levy less. So we levy the three million fifty-five, we could, our maximum capacity is to go up to the three million one eighty-four. Which would be a four point two percent increase. And that's the one percent from last year and the one percent from this year plus new construction. That's why it's, that's why it's higher than that one percent. And then our levy rate decreased, like I said, as your assessed value goes up, your levy rate goes down. So our levy rate decreased fifteen point one percent. And then if you're just looking at an average home value of five hundred thousand dollars last year. Your new home value based on the new assessed value would be six hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars, so that's showing you what that increase would be. And your tax assessment would go from four hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents up to four hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. That's just the city's portion, but that's the increase that it would go on. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Casey.
Sorry, that was a lot.
The ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called upon, step up to the microphone, give your name and state whether you are a resident of the city of Covington. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council on this topic? Is there anybody online wishing to address council on this topic? Seeing nobody raise their hand, I declare this public hearing closed. And does council have any questions for Casey? Chuck.
Oh, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I think I ask this every year, but just to confirm, the four hundred and thirty-five dollar ninety-four cent amount, that's per year. Correct, thank you. So then if we chose to add last year's banked one percent, this year's one percent. It would roughly, based on the average home price, um, be a seventeen dollar change per year, which is about a buck fifty per month increase, thank you.
Thank you. And um, if these, uh, I've got a list of questions, so indulge me here. But, and if we need to go over them on Saturday, that's, that's fine too. So um, I guess just to start, I really do appreciate, again, it's, I've only been up here eight years and it's just now starting to sink in how this all works. But it, I'd just be interested on all of these revenue sources, what's the grand total that we collect? That's one number I'd love to see and what it adds up to.
About nineteen million in the general funds, but I can, I can get that for you.
So all of these funds together is about nineteen million dollars.
That's just the general.
That's just, so that goes in general, but I guess what I'm saying is with property taxes, with sales taxes, with these things, how much money do we bring in? Is that nineteen mil? And you don't have to get it right now, that's just something that.
It's in the budget work.
Okay.
If you want, we can go through those on the side.
And I'm helping you.
Nineteen million for general fund, but then obviously.
Yeah. And I'm gonna come back to property taxes. On sales tax, I think it's important to note, you got the um, uh, table in here. And the sales tax for Covington is eight point seven, but seven point seven of that is, almost goes to, it goes to other entities. It goes to the state or the county. So really, Covington's portion is about one percent, and I think that's important for the public to, to realize. That eight point seven sales tax, and I think people automatically equate that goes to the city, it doesn't. Only about one percent goes to the city, so um, I just was struck by that. Um, I also noticed on the street fund that we do have a twenty dollar um, vehicle license fee. Um, remind me, we can go up to forty dollars, is that correct?
Exactly, I think it's up to forty, and then there's another level, I have to look it up.
Okay.
I can have that available.
I'm just, that, that's another. I'm just, that's another potential area if we need, I think, just need to remember that we only used half of that um, funding source. And then on property taxes, um, is that, I appreciate the the attachment you provided us. So is the property tax, if we collected everything in point one million? Is that how much we get from the property tax? Okay. Wow, that's interesting. Um, and correct me, did I hear you correctly say that? We've been banking the the last couple of years and the county's been collecting that?
No, they don't collect it.
They don't collect it? Okay, cuz I, okay.
It was just last year.
Okay, so just last year's cuz, okay, that's that's good cuz I thought you said they were collecting it and I was under the impression we weren't even ass. Assessing that. Okay, that that helps. Um, and then finally, um. Just had our legislative uh, update and I know we're gonna talk more about it. Um, one of the things that's gonna come back is the uh, missing middle uh, housing. And I'm just wondering what the potential impact on property values that will be. Now, what we're told is that. Housing will get more affordable, which could mean, where I'm reading it, that property values will go down. So what does that mean for our potential revenue from property values? Um, and if it doesn't go down, then it's actually not. Serving exactly what they're hoping it will serve. So anyway, I'm just curious, and you don't have to answer it now if you don't know it, but.
No, I can answer that. Um, so as assessed value goes down, then the rate goes up.
Right.
So we can still have our one percent. You won't see a change. We will still capture a one percent increase each year. So it's the levy that's set and then it's dispersed among the residents. And if the assessed value goes down, their rate just goes up.
Right. Well, that's interesting cuz if your property value goes down, most people expect their property taxes to go down, but they actually wouldn't. Yeah, so that's curious.
I I guess there's potential that they could go down.
If they drop significantly. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And then um, Don mentioned that the T B D fees, we can raise it an additional twenty on our own. And then after two years, we can enter from raising an additional ten.
Okay. All right.
And if I could just refer you, when you have a chance to be working pages four and five, have all the revenue uh, for each fund. For point two.
Total, forty nine million? Is that one? Oh, that's. So forty nine point eight million.
Forty nine was eight. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I'm other online.
Fifty two minute. Okay.
So the the one percent that that council chose not to take for twenty twenty one, is that correct? Twenty twenty one?
Uh, assessed in twenty twenty one, but we would have collected it this year in twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Is there any statute of limitation on how far, so you have to take it if you choose to take it the next year?
No, we can um, continue to have the county. They aren't, they're not holding the funds. It's just our ability to go and capture those funds if they choose to. So there's no statute. We can um, at any time go back and ask to recoup those bank funds. But we wouldn't be going back and collecting them from past years. It would just be moving forward.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
It's it's the, it's not the funds that's banked. It's our capacity.
Okay. So the money's not sitting out in any state fund or, okay.
It's just allowing us to capture that one percent if they choose to move it forward.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Need anything from us tonight? I know this will be coming back to us and we'll be discussing more this Saturday. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Next up is our second public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public. Regarding the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Six Year Capital Improvement Plan for two thousand twenty three to two thousand twenty eight. Mitigation and Level of Service Policy and Amending the Capital Facilities and Utilities Element. Appendix and Existing Conditions Report of the Covington Comprehensive Plan to Include the Same. And Adopt the Two Thousand Twenty Three Fire Impact Fee Schedule.
Just real quick, do I need to recuse myself? I thought I did in the past on this. Do I need to recuse myself?
I I I believe you have in the past, and so I um, conceptualize it, Mark. I I whether you have to or not.
Yeah, probably should.
I'd suggest.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. This being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance with state and local law, I declare this public hearing now open. And Selena is, will be providing the staff's report for this item, I believe.
Yes, hello. Good evening, counsel. We have a series of public hearings tonight related to adoption of capital programs and associated impact fees. Uh, the first hearing tonight um, is on the Puget Sound Regional Fires Capital Program and Associated Impact Fees. So each year, the Regional Fire Authority evaluates their capital, their capital needs through the six year capital program. And they look at what is necessary for them to provide services within the city, and they also look at their levels of service. Um, we take that capital program that they run through their process. And then we bring it into the city and we run it through our process in a public hearing because we adopt their capital plans in our in our, the city comprehensive plans. By reference, okay? And the reason that we do that is kind of twofold. One is they provide services to Covington. So we collectively, all of our stakeholders and folks that do business here and and provide services. We have to make sure that we're aligned when it comes to growth and capacity, okay? The second reason that we do it is because we collect fire impact fees on their behalf and state law allows cities to do that. Um, and so what you have before you tonight is essentially their capital improvement program, their level of service program. And then it um, on the council agenda, it outlines what those proposed impact fees are. Um, impact fees cannot be collected at a hundred percent, right? So that means we cannot charge developers for a hundred percent of that need. That the fire department has identified to offset any kind of resources. And so that is really a proportion of of what they expect development to pay, right? So the idea that it's concurrent, right? That's kind of a fancy word for development is helping to offset their development costs. And that we're providing concurrency through the services that they provide to make sure that it accommodates the growth moving forward. Um, and so what you have before you tonight are those two items. Um, I can go into more detail. There's a lot of great information. I actually really enjoy reading the fires. Uh, their capital program. They have a lot of great charts and graphs in there about the services they provide and the levels of service. Um, within Covington at their their two stations that are nearby. Um, so tonight, that staff is just asking that the council adopts um, their six year capital improvement plan, their level of service policy. Um, the associated impact fees, and then we will incorporate that into our comprehensive plan. And we will also be coming back in November to incorporate those adopted fees into our fee resolution.
Thank you, Selena. Ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, step up to the microphone, give your name and state whether you are a resident of the city of Covington. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address this public hearing? Is there anybody online wishing to address this item? Seeing nobody raise their hand, I will declare this public hearing closed. And does counsel have any question that would like to bring up? All right, seeing before us, we have two items for adoption, possible adoption. The first one is to pass an ordinance in substantial form. Is that attached here too? Adopting the updated Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Six Year Capital Improvement Plan for two thousand twenty three to two thousand twenty eight. The two thousand twenty three fire impact fee schedule. And the two thousand twenty three mitigation and level of service policy. And amending the capital facilities and utilities element, appendix and existing conditions report of the city's comprehensive plan to include the same.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Joe and seconded by Beth. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Our regional fire authority has a a lot that they do. And just by looking at the chart that they have in our packet. Uh, there's been an overall twelve percent increase in incident responses in the last five years. Covington, thank goodness for Maple Valley and Sea Tech, otherwise Covington would be the highest one on this list. But unlike those cities, we continually have more every year. So making sure that they have the things they need for their to improve and continue to grow is important. And I'm very supportive of anything that they need to ensure that our public is is safe.
Thank you, Joe. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Um, I think Joe stated those reasons very well. Give them the tools they need to support us. And I know staff has vetted this. Uh, trust their judgment.
Anybody else wishing to speak for her is the most. All right, seeing nobody raise their hand, has been moved and seconded to pass an ordinance. In substantial form, is that attached here too, adopting the updated Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Six Year Capital Improvement Plan. For two thousand twenty three to two thousand twenty eight. Two thousand twenty three fire impact fee schedule and the two thousand twenty three mitigation and level of service policy. And amending the capital facilities and utilities element, appendix and existing conditions report of the city's comprehensive plan to include the same. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That ordinance passes. The second item up for consideration is to consider adopting the two thousand twenty three fire impact fee to be incorporated into the two thousand twenty three. Fee resolution as adopted by the city council.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Joan, seconded by Beth. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
They can't have capital improvement without the fees, so we have to do something. Otherwise, it's just the empty gesture.
Beth, would you like to speak here second?
It needs to be written, documented, and congruent with what they charge. So it has to be official and it should be that.
Thank you, Beth. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for against the motion? Been moved and seconded to adopt the two thousand twenty three fire impact fee to be incorporated into the two thousand twenty three fee resolution that was adopted by the city council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It has been adopted. Please have Sean come in, please. Really want to chase him down? Welcome back.
Thank you.
Next up is agenda item number three, our third public hearing for tonight. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding. Possible adoption of the Kent School District Six Year Capital Facilities Plan for two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty two. Two thousand twenty seven, two thousand twenty eight. And amending the capital facilities and utilities element, appendix, and existing conditions report of the Covington Comprehensive Plan to include the same. And adopt the two thousand twenty three Kent School District Impact Fee Schedule. This being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance with state and local law, I declare this public hearing open. I'll turn this over to Selena.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, so similar to what we just discussed about the fire impact fees, this Kent School District um, also provided us our six, their six. Provided this fee their six year capital improvement program, um, which is there in the exhibit A. Um, the city also adopts this document by reference within our comprehensive plan because we are within the Kent School District. And we um, work hand in hand with them as the city grows. We want to make sure that we're providing adequate education services to accommodate that growth. Right? So that's across their their K to twelve grade. And um, so they also provide a a capital program and an impact fee that is assessed. Um, for developers to pay their proportionate share. And for the school, they generally range about fifty percent of their proportionate share they go on to development. Um, one thing that you may have noticed in the agenda item and the um, the capital program is that this year, they're actually going to be collecting zero dollars. As an impact fee. Um, part of the reason for not collecting a school impact fee this year. Um, is that, and it's kind of there within various um, parts of the report, a few different reasons. But ultimately, it comes down to that they've identified kind of reduced or flat enrollment. Um, over the last couple of years within the Kent School District. And they also are doing a capacity study to determine what facilities they have in place and what their actual capacity needs are. So I think they're also taking a moment um, to just kind of assess what that is, um, that they're gonna need to accommodate any kind of future growth. Um, one question that always tends to come up that I'll just address now is, you know, do they and are we working with them regarding kind of our larger developments such as like. And the answer to that is yes. They are aware of that and we are having conversations with them as the development unfolds. Um, and so this year, they are still proposing to have zero impact be collected. Um, they'll reassess that obviously next year when their study is done and we come back with their updated capital program for the following year. Um, so tonight, similarly, the staff is um, recommends that the council adopt the tents. Uh, the Kent School District's Capital Facilities Plan um, as attached to the agenda. And then the associated twenty twenty three school impact fee as presented. And then we will bring um, we will incorporate that in. Uh, capital facilities plan into our comprehensive plan and we will be bringing back that fee into our fee reservation just in.
Thank you, Selena. The ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, step up to the microphone, give your name, state whether you are a resident of the city of Covington. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address the counsel on this item? Is there anybody online wishing to address counsel on this? Seeing nobody raise their hand, I will declare this public hearing closed. Does counsel have any questions for Selena?
Hey, I recall in these past plans that they give us the current enrollment of each school. Because I always like to see how our community is being served by the district with respect to overcrowding. I don't see that this year, and I'm curious if I'm missing it. It's usually on that one that has the inventory and enrollment. Um, capacity. So it has functional capacity, but I don't see current enrollment figures. Um, I think that would be helpful for us just in general to know. I kind of like to have a feel for how many of our kids are importables, how many of them are stuffed in the classrooms. Yeah, and I mean, it's not a deal breaker for me. I'm just curious why it was left out.
I want to say I read that in here, but I I don't think they did it by school. I think they did it at a discreet, discreet.
Correct. I see it, but yes. And I realize they serve multiple cities, so I understand. Um, from that perspective, but from a city's perspective, it is, it's helpful information.
Yeah, and that's actually information I can ask them, you know, maybe just bring that back.
Okay.
In comments at a future council meeting.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
So are you saying that we, if we adopted this? Are we required to follow their. E schedule? Can we collect a school impact fee regardless of and hold the funds for when we know they're going to ask for it? And we know there is going to be a lot of development happening next year. And we know that with that development, there's going to be a need. And I understand they're in the middle of a capacity study. But we know what's gonna happen. It's the same thing, right? I mean, it's continue to grow and continue to have enrollment.
Right.
Can we do that?
Um, and I'm gonna kind of let Mark jump in, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna attempt to answer that. I think the short answer to that is gonna be no. Um, just because we don't control that capital. So for the city to go back and to be able to say, we are gonna charge X amount of dollars for schools, we have to be able to do that capital assessment. we have to be able to do that capital assessment. We, we don't own that assessment. We don't own the district to be able to go back and justify that. And I think something to really drive home with impact fees is that it is tied to capital, right? So it's the same with, with, with parks and traffic um, and fire. And so we're not in a position to make those decisions. Where we could have um, given input to that is, you know, when they were reviewing their capital plans, which they do in, you know, April, May, June. Um, that, you know, there might be concern about, about the need to want to adopt impact fees. But we, we aren't in a position to assess those on their behalf. We're just in a position to collect those on their behalf. Um, I do, I, I think Paula had another question in there to her statement that I want to address is that it is a true statement that development that would be coming in in two thousand twenty-three would not be collecting impact fees. Impact fees are collected at the time of building permit issuance, okay? And right now, we're estimating potentially about seventy-five homes that we would see if all things go well, that we would see come in in two thousand twenty-three. So we're really just losing that on those other, those roughly seventy-five homes that are coming in. The other development that's in the pipeline, land use applications, commercial projects, things of that nature, when they come in for an application, it's roughly about two or three years before you actualize a building permit. So kind of looking at that larger scale, their twenty twenty-four revenue or their twenty twenty-four impact fee, right? We might not, they might come back and say, we've done our assessment, we know what we need for brick and mortar, we know what our capital needs are, and now there's our D P, and then we would capture that twenty twenty-four. So, so from a, just a technical piece, we would really only be out impact fees for seventy-five units that we're expecting next year.
And if a developer puts in for a building permit, they have, I, I could see, I could see developers that know they're going to be putting in cramming them all in next year when they know they're not going to have to do it.
Like, right, but that's, but the development process doesn't work that way.
Okay.
Right? So the development process is you come in, get your land entitlement, you do your subdivision on paper, you build your subdivision, and then you come get your building permit. So developers will not be able to kind of free submit building applications to get this benefit because it will feel like a benefit to them. Um, they will have to wait until that time that their project, you know, is ready for building permit and then pay those fees in effect at the time of issuing.
And if I ask just one more quick question, then how many times in the past has the, has this happened where they're saying no fee collected for this particular year?
You know, my experience with the Kent School District particularly, I haven't seen them go to a zero. I have seen them reduce the number, right? So during the economic downturns in, you know, twenty twenty-five or two thousand and five, two thousand and eight, sorry. Um, I did see them either hold the number stagnant and not do a, an increase or reduce the percentage that the developer is responsible for. Um, in my experience as a planner and doing this for other cities, I have seen cities go to zeros um, before, and that again was also during those times of a recession that we experienced when people were incentivizing development. I, you know, I, I think when you read the report, you can tell that they're trying or they're working on assessing what their needs are. And I, and I feel this might be a pause for them. The other piece to impact fees, and I'm not saying this is what Kent is up against, but it's just in general and could play a role in that, is that you have an expenditure timeline on impact fees, which I believe is ten years. It used to be seven years. Yeah, looking at that, yeah, seven years. Yeah, well, whatever. There's a timeline that you have to spend that money. And if that money is not spent, then you have to give the money back, right? And so I've seen that just in jurisdictions from other things like park impact fees and things of that nature. So I'm not going to speculate on exactly why they're doing that, but there are the gamut around impact fees and how they are assessing collective that. They're making some decisions that a zero impact fee is their best decision this year based on their capital needs. Thank you.
Mark, you have anything you would like to add?
No, I think Selena covered that really well. Um, just, just for council and for the public, this is always cyclical based upon a formula that's been backed up in court many, many times, and most school districts follow the same um, set of formulas for coming up and determining how they're going to assess school impact fees in the future. So it's always based upon previous years and it's forecasted out. So this is something where councils had, I have seen them try to make some, attempt to make some changes to it. But at this point, I would not suggest that council pursue that without having a chance for staff to talk to the school district or otherwise.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, before us, we have the option to pass an ordinance in substantial form as that attached here to adopting the updated Kent School District six-year capital facilities plan for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight, and the two thousand twenty-three school impact fee schedule and amending the capital facilities and utilities element appendix and existing condition report of the city's comprehensive plan to include the same. Councilors take action tonight.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved by Jennifer and seconded by Christina. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, sure. Supporting the uh, growth of our school districts is uh, an important uh, role of the city and um, yeah, definitely, I support it.
Christina, thanks. Speak to your second.
Sure, um, regardless of where our economy goes, um, our schools are very important as the future of our children. And um, I actually agree with this, this cycle. Um, based on what we have seen in the last year that we've actually never seen regardless of where the economy went um, as far as attendance in those schools, so I fully support it.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for against the motion?
I'm, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around this zero impact fee thing. Capital improvement plan, I'm completely fine with. I, I get it. I'm just not convinced that saying no in our region is the right course of action from the school district.
Anybody else? It's been moved as seconded to pass an ordinance in substantial form with that attached here to adopting the updated Kent School District six-year capital facilities plan for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two through the two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight, and the two thousand twenty-three school impact fee schedule and amending the capital facilities and utilities element appendix and existing conditions report of the city's comprehensive plan to include the same. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
It passes six to one.
Mayor, oh, sorry, if I may, just real quick, um, just to verify it is a ten year. You have to spend that money in ten years.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the to adopt the two thousand twenty-three school impact fee to be incorporated into the two thousand twenty-three fee resolution as adopted by the city council. Councilors should take action.
So moved.
Second. Been moved by Joan, seconded by Sean to adopt the two thousand twenty-three school impact fee to be incorporated into the two thousand twenty-three fee resolution as adopted by the city council. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, so a couple of big things. One, it's zero dollars. I think that's great. But I also know that in years past, this has been something we've had large discussions with the school board and the school district on, and this has been a point of contention with us in the past with the school district that luckily we have worked out. Secondly, with the school district going through boundary changes, they're going through what, let's not start on that one either. But uh, they're going through finding out how their populations and giving their best estimates for at least the next five to ten years, what that's going to be. And I'm going through and studying what that actually is, I think is a good thing. And taking a year to understand that we're not sure how this money can go or where this money can go. And figuring it out, I think is an appropriate thing. So a zero dollar impact fee and making sure that we have that on our books. So when they come back and yell at us, it's like, nope, this is what you said, and we can have that.
Thank you, Joe. Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
No, I'm good.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the two thousand twenty-three school impact fee to be incorporated into the two thousand twenty-three fee resolution as adopted by the city council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Thank you all very much. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We will move made reports of commissions. Thank you for sticking around. Start with Josh. I think we're the homework.
Yeah, I think so too.
Anyway. There we go. Better? Um, so tonight's uh, report is pretty brief, uh, because mainly about what we're going to do versus what we've done. And uh, what I want to focus on is uh, something that, that I think is super exciting. I think it has the potential to be the start of a transformational era, particularly for our downtown business core. Uh, this Thursday at four P M. here, uh, CEDIS has put together along with some other community partners what we, what I would call, I don't know if we have a name for it, but I call it the downtown core business. Right, right? You just want to go by hearing that. Um, so uh, essentially what we're doing is we're looking to capture the momentum created by the Clean Safe Welcome Initiative. Uh, we've leveraged Regan's uh, authority and power to really uh, encourage some of our major stakeholders in the community to attend. This would include uh, landowners in the business sector. It would include um, uh, management companies. It would include businesses, uh, commercial real estate agents, all of uh, those categories that I mentioned. We have several key stakeholders who have RSVP'd. Uh, and so we're going to start a conversation really around um, uh, something around creating a public-private partnership towards creating a personality for the downtown core that can really, or ideally, generate perpetual by talent. Uh, and really what I'm referring to and I've referred to before is that there's a predictable life cycle of downtown cores that we seek to interrupt in a positive way. And uh, and I think we've really got a good start with the Clean Safe Welcome Initiative. And so uh, we're going to start that, that conversation Thursday. Uh, the, the major idea at this point is the creation of some level of a downtown association uh, that many other communities have, uh, which is um, you know, just probably something like CEDIS on a higher level, uh, which would, you know, include some level of public and private, mostly private funding uh, for some major initiatives towards uh, the goals that I've mentioned. So that's coming up at four o'clock again on Thursday. Love to have anybody, uh, you that wants to attend, be there. It's going to be a great conversation.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody have any questions for Joe? Thank you very much for being here, Joe.
Yeah, thank you.
Always a pleasure seeing you.
All right, take care.
Next is Arts Commission. Patty, welcome.
Thanks for having me. Um, unfortunately, we weren't unable to have our meeting, our monthly meeting in October due to an illness. But um, we did have our joint council meeting this evening, so you guys know everything you're working on and the plans that we have to continue on and improve the city through art. That's all I have.
Thanks, Patty. Thanks for being here for our joint session. Next is Equity, Cultural, and Social Justice Commission. Don't see anybody here. Human Services Commission. Parks and Recreation Commission.
They'll have their report in November.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Planning Commission. And then Youth Council. We did have a youth council member on line earlier. Right? I guess that concludes our reports of commissions. Thank you all very much. Next up is new business item number four, council appointments to the regional forums. So looking at our list, so we have the regional forums that we appoint here as council. And then there are the other ones that are applications that are required through Sound Cities Association. Um, tonight, I'm going to start with the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority. Um, Sean, you were currently on that. You wish to continue doing that for next year.
Uh, yes, please.
Thank you. We'll go back up to Metropolitan Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee, MISMAC. Uh, last year was Dawn and Shelley. Do we have anybody that would like to take that on? Dawn, are you able to continue? Thank you, Dawn. Next up is South County Area Transportation Board, Skateboard. Last year, we had Jared and Bob. Uh, who would be able to take that on? They meet the third Tuesday at nine A M. at CTEC City Hall. Anybody on the council that can take that on?
Will that occasionally conflict with council meetings if it's the third?
It's at nine A M.
Oh, sorry, is that?
Nope.
Oh, God. I'll take that.
Thanks, Debbie. And then um, uh, be able to stay as alternate. So um, Debbie, would you, Dawn or Bob could get updated?
Okay, I need that favor.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Debbie. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee. Um, Joey, you were the uh, member and Christina was alternate. If you would continue.
Yes, please.
And Christina, okay? Ryra Nine, Water Resource Inventory Area Nine Forum. Uh, last year, we had Jennifer as a member and Sean as alternate. You wish to continue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then last is South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, Skip. Uh, Joey, you were the member last year and Christina was alternate.
I am, I am willing to rotate off of Skip.
Okay, Christine, are you willing to step up as a member?
Sure.
And Debbie, you'd mention being alternate?
I'll be able to.
All right, and then the other items. Um, Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board, I've applied through SCA for that. Um, PSRC's Growth Management Policy Board. If anybody's interested in that, please apply through SCA. And then there's also PSRC's Transportation Policy Board. Um, I think we have until the first week of November?
November tenth.
November tenth, thank you, to apply for that. And then the King County Growth Management Planning Council, G M P C, that's what I use to be on. And that can be applied through um, SCA as well. So if you're going to apply for, and then there's a lot of other committees um, to apply for through SCA, make sure you let um, Chris, Kristin know that what you're applying for. And the opening is listed on the SCA website. So I'm going to um, list these all. So we are making a motion to appoint these council members to regional forums as follows. For MISMAC, um, Dawn is a member and Shelley is alternate. Skateboard, Debbie as a member, Bob is alternate. Peg, Joe is a member, Christina is the alternate. Ryra Nine, Jennifer as the member, Sean is alternate. Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, Sean Smith is the member. And then Skip, Christina as the member, and Debbie as the alternate. We have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second?
Been moved and seconded to appoint them. Any discussion? Okay, been moved and seconded to appoint the council members to the regional forums that listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. Next up is agenda item number five, to discuss the two thousand twenty-three legislative priorities and policies. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, Holly and Brianna gave a great uh, update of what's happening, what's coming, and what we can expect in the two thousand twenty-three uh, session. So this, these are the items that we'll present on the priorities and on the policy document are what we feel um, uh, are priorities for Covington and that we have um, decent um, opportunities to lobby for in this next session. So you'll see um, the first on packet page two oh six is potential agenda uh, priority items. And we've listed several under, we tell that state partnership for transportation. Uh, there's several items that really we wanted to make sure and recognize. the work done by the Move Ahead Washington Plan. And then continue the conversations around funding, the completion of two seventy-second from one hundred eighty-fifth to the east city limits. As you recall, that was one of our asks during the last session that was not funded. But we need to keep that on the forefront of legislators. And then we wanted to also begin the conversation about a potential pedestrian bridge over two seventy-second and ask for eight hundred thousand to study feasibility and design for that. Two seventy-second, as you know, we have over forty thousand vehicles a day. And if we really want our downtown core to be a walkable area, this is kind of a crucial piece to that. A lot of people trying to cross those six lanes just don't feel safe. And so this would give us money to study feasibility and design. Then we also, we listed on there the two other items. We stated our desire for the Highway eighteen widening project that we helped secure funding for with CLTC last year, that that continue to move forward on expeditious, expeditious schedule with Wash Dot and his funding dollars come via priority there. We also requested the legislature to, that they identify and pass new and ongoing funding sources to help cities maintain our streets. That's just something that they've not done yet. And so this will be something we'll continue to ask for. I do have a question for council on those last two, the widening and safety improvements and the maintenance and preservation. Typically, we like to keep our priorities to, you know, three to five kind of priorities. Those may be items we want to move to our policy document. So when opportunities come up, we address them, but we're not possibly meeting on those two items. So we can discuss that when we get to the end. On capital funding, this is a request for the legislature to fund a trail connecting SoCo Park and Jenkins Creek Park. In addition to providing eventual links to King County Trails, this would allow all those living in multifamily housing in our downtown core to access parks, open space, retail, and the hospital by using that trail without having to cross. They'd be able to go under two seventy-second that they wouldn't cross because the bridge we're building would be that connection, that connection point. So that was something we felt would be really important. Still a little unsure, the two million will probably not fund the entirety of that section of trail from SoCo Park to Jenkins Creek. But it would give us a good phase of that and the design as well. And then on public safety, we've included a general statement encouraging the legislature to pass public safety laws that help us fight crime and make sure offenders are prosecuted. As you know, that's, that's a major issue in the region. And that those who need, who need to have access to treatment are able to get that access. We also asked that laws recognize that the possession and use of drugs cannot be tolerated. Rihanna spoke about that. The temporary policies that are in place expire, so the legislature will need to do something or else it will just be, the officers cannot arrest for drug possession. And as you know, there are some legislators that are advocating for that, some advocating against that. So this is something that I think is an important issue, especially for cities, and cities are getting behind this for the next legislative session. The next item on our priority document is audits. And we've talked about this a little bit, but in Washington State, cities are required to have a state auditor's office audit their, their financials each year. This is normally a ten to twelve week process, but it's beginning to get longer and longer. In fact, this year, it will take double or if not more time to do it. That is one may question, well, why does that matter? It matters because our finance department schedules our time around audits. And when an audit exceeds the limit that they say they'll be here like for months and months, it creates quite a bit of, I, I'm talking to this because Casey might get a little heated, but it, it's, it's a huge disruption to our ongoing flow of work in the city. And this is an issue that not just Covington has had to deal with in the last couple of years. This year was the worst, but many, many cities are in the same boat. There are states all over the country that allow cities to contract with private accounting firms to conduct their audits. They, and I've worked in states that allow that, and the process is so much simpler. It's a much more expedited process. They, of course, have to audit per the state auditor's office requirements. But that's something that we thought we need to look for in this next legislative session. Something like this was raised several years ago, and the auditor's office wouldn't even come to the table and speak with those working on it. We have a call in to the auditor's office to hopefully let them know, hey, this is something a lot of us cities are concerned about. Can we talk about it? Because maybe there's a compromise, right? That if the auditor's office is behind, they're unable to perform the audit in their stated time that we can contract to go to have those audits performed. So that seems like a reasonable solution, but we'll see where that ends up. If this is something the council wants us to pursue, our first action would be to form a coalition around this with other cities. But that's why we have one here, because it's becoming increasingly more and more of a problem that cities are having to deal with. So that's all on the priorities. Before we go to the policy document, any questions or concerns? Yeah.
The pedestrian bridge, I don't recall ever hearing about this before. Would you please elaborate? I mean, really, the only time I heard it was at Covington Days from a resident. Carla and I didn't know what they were talking about. So we were like, no, what? Nothing like that exists.
Quite honestly, nothing does exist except for what we just put in this legislative priority. So this is, this was an idea we thought of about a month ago. We've not, at least in the time I've been there, had.
A resident said they heard it at an open house, swear at Covington Days.
I, I don't know. I don't know. It's, it's nothing we've ever studied on or done. So this was just a thought. I know several, I looked at Maple Valley got some funding last year for one to cross one sixty-nine. A couple of cities in North Puget Sound have done it as well.
Where on Kent Kangley would be an appropriate space for that?
That's what the feasibility would study.
Yeah, I guess I'm confused because there's crosswalks in light of intersections and lots of areas to cross. I would prefer that priority be put on a trail, but you know.
So there are different funding sources. So the trail funding and this would be totally different funding sources. So they wouldn't compete with each other if that's what your concern is. But yeah, the, this is really just kind of in infancy right now. And if something, if it's something council wanted to, to move forward with, we could. We don't know a lot about it. That's why we're saying, will you fund a feasibility and design over your state highway so that we can have easier pedestrian access from both sides of our city? Okay, that's it.
Okay.
So I'd like to add that previous councils, from the beginning before we came to the city, it's always been a item of contention that we want Covington to be a walkable city. And there was discussions of Covington Days back then was going to make money to help do that, which didn't happen. There was no money coming to them. But to help build that, that was one of Pat's, Sullivan's.
Okay. It did exist somewhere.
And Margaret had that when she first came on council so that it, but it just kind of lost its steam probably over the last fifteen years. And then seeing this on here brought back great memories, so.
So maybe they went to an open house twenty years ago.
It wouldn't surprise me. They had a lot of opinions.
Yeah.
If I can, as far as I heard in this vein is that it's much about accessibility, specifically for people that might have a hard time crossing six lanes of traffic in a reasonable time. I'm assuming there would be maybe like a lift on it or elevator.
Well, it would have to be eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight compliant.
A lift would be extremely expensive, but it'd have to be.
Yeah.
That, that is one of the considerations.
Anybody else?
Really quick, I know we're talking about the audits and forming a coalition currently where we sit. Is there interest in other cities that you may know about?
So we've discussed it with, with other cities. Casey's commiserated with several of them. But at this point, there's, there's not, hey, let's, let's all get together and lobby the state for this.
Okay.
We'd have to, we have to start that.
Thank you. At least maybe they can provide a secondary firm. If not, just go private.
Move on to policy.
Sure. So I'll go through these a little bit quicker. Like Holly said, these are items that we're going to watch and track that may not be leading out on. And again, a lot of these are, are things that A W C, SCA, some other organizations that we support as well are working on. So state shared revenues, the property tax, one percent annual growth limit. That's been a, a big one that's, keeps being brought up over and over. Public safety vehicular pursuits, Brianna or Holly, one of them spoke a little bit about that a little earlier. And then basic infrastructure funding. And then the W W R P grants is on there as well. That encouraging full investment into those grant programs. Parks maintenance and operation, opportunities for additional funding there. Increasing limits on contract with nonprofit organizations that would increase a city's limit from twenty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand. Removing barriers to the construction of housing. And this really kind of centers around that middle housing that we've talked about, that Covington's done actually a, a good job at that. This goes to the condo liability act as well, but that needs to be revisited because that's prevented developers last several years that they won't even build condos. So that's, that's continual work. Community input on local policy. That is what we used to call local control. Legislators, we continue here, don't like that term, so we've changed it to that. Anyway, and then of course unfunded mandates that we oppose, unfunded mandates that the state pushes out to cities. So that's all on our policy document. Any questions?
All right. Go.
I think you put me over on this side so you can't see my hand. I'd be Jennifer's fault. Yeah. So my, I like this. I think these are some very good things, but are judging from the disappointment that the legislature had last year in the, or not the legislature, but the governor's office had that the missing middle did not get out of a pass. Is there going to be a lot of pushback, do we think, from, from the House and the Senate? If we're putting things in there, it's like, well, we're already doing this. Why are you mandating it sort of a thing? Is, is, do we think there's going to be some pushback on that?
You know, it really kind of depends on the makeup of the legislature next session as they talked about that it could change considerably. But with the legislature that was in place last year, there wasn't pushback. That was more like, oh, good on Covington. We just want people to do more, right? We want news parties to do more. Our message was, well, don't mandate it, maybe incentivize it. That message wasn't well received. And, you know, I think that's why cities almost unanimously, except for Seattle and one or two others, strongly oppose this. There, it sounds like a few more cities have gotten behind something like this. And when I was on the A W C board last year, our discussions around this, Seattle was, has a member sitting on the board and they, they wanted A W C to support the governor's bill. Everyone else was opposed to it. And the whole question was, you can already do this. A city doesn't need to be mandated to do it. The city council is vested with the authority to already do this. So it's, it's, it's an unfunded mandate is essentially what it is. So, but in answer, sorry, Joe, direct, direct into your question, I, I would say we actually got more props than like, why are you opposing?
Well, it's more of, do I feel, are we feeling that the state will be doing more pushback on the cities who are opposing the missing metal bills that will probably be in session? But then that goes into our next thing where we're talking about input on local policy. I will have to work on that because I will still say local control. But it's one of those that, is, is that going to be one of those things that we push on the policy? Is that we're already doing it because we've been given this ability through the state to do this? Can we, why are we asking, why are you asking for this unfunded mandate? When we go, we're going to have at least two new legislatures, as we stated earlier. Is this going to be one of those ones where we're going to have to go with the other twenty-three plus possible new members of the House and Senate to remind them that we've already, we're already doing this. There's no need for you to do this, sort of a ideal.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it depends on how far this, this bill goes. But if it's something we oppose and, and it's gaining a lot of traction, then yeah, it would be a hard, a hard sell to go and, and just focus on our legislators. But this is something, we talked, Jeff and I, to our potential candidates in the forty-seventh district on our tours, we, we mentioned this as, as an issue. I, I don't see this being as difficult of an issue as it was last year. And I think there's, you know, last year it was no compromises. This is what we want. There's going to have to be something shape, shape out of this, and maybe it will fall in line more with what Covington's been doing anyway. But that's just hard to know at this point. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right. You need anything from us tonight, Regan?
Yeah, I think just I, two issues is on the transportation, the widening and safety improvements. And that's, that's really just kind of a, hey, reminder, we, we funded Highway eighteen. You know, make sure to keep that rolling. And then the maintenance and preservation, if we wanted to move those to our policy document or keep those on the priorities. So that there's that. Another thought I had is depending on how the council's feeling, the, the vehicle, vehicular pursuits. That's obviously a big issue when the legislature took the opportunity for vehicle pursuits and a Terry stop, stopping a person and raise that threshold to probable cause. They didn't bring back for a Terry stop, so that can be done with reasonable suspicion now, but not vehicular pursuits. Is that something council would want on the priority list? Or just keep it in our policy document? There are obviously a lot of other agencies that will be working on this issue. But so those would be the two things I'd like direction on when we'll bring this back.
So let's take the widen, safety improvements and the maintenance preservation. Right now, it's listed on our legislative agenda. This council, we can only legislate the agenda. We have a consensus for that. Okay. So we'll leave it there. And then the next item is the public safety vehicular pursuits. Does council wish to leave it on the policy document or should we move it to our legislative agenda? Consensus to leave it on the policy document?
Can I have, clear, right? What's the difference? You know, what is it? What does it matter?
The difference is, as opposed to signing in and support when other agencies might be testifying or working on this, we would be upfront and, and be testifying and.
If we put it on our legislative agenda.
If we put it on our priority list, it will be what, what our focus is. If we keep it on our policy document, then it would be something that we show support for, but we're not working on every day.
I think.
And that would dilute the attention from the other four things that we have on our.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to get to whatever's on that priority list. You know, so whatever the council wants to put there, we'll, we'll get to it. I, I wouldn't say it's going to distract or dilute the work we put in for it.
And so consensus for vehicular pursuit on a policy document? We've got one, two, three, four. Time for making a priority.
I would say that as well.
So keep it on the policy doc?
Yeah.
It's a reboat.
Pardon?
Called a reboat.
Oh, called a reboat. So.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry. I'm still, I'm a little confused about policy versus putting it on the priority. But you said if we, if we leave it on the policy, we can still ask for it to be reviewed.
Yeah, of course. And maybe what I would recommend, you know, if we're worried about, because this has a lot on it more than our other priority documents have in the last several years. The Highway eighteen one, we. The highway eighteen one, we could move to our policy document. That's just. A reminder, we've got this out there and vehicular pursuits, if you wanted to make that swap. I mean, the, the funding's there, right? We already secured the funding. And we'll, we'll still be working that. So.
That's.
So taking.
Taking widening and safety improvement of state route eighteen off the priority list and moving it to policy and then moving vehicular pursuits from policy to priority.
Yeah, that's an option, or just move the vehicular pursuits over. Either way.
Or just leave it on the policy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which we already voted to do, just point out. But no.
We had a request for Reagan. So.
I would actually support that. I think, I think the impact that, like. Like Reagan said, it wouldn't dilute, but it would put us at the forefront of. Anyway, of this, and I. I would support moving highway eighteen down and bringing. To priority.
Okay, so then. Is there consensus to move the highway eighteen from priority to policy? And vehicular pursuit from policy to priority? There consensus for that?
I'm not in support of moving highway eighteen off that list.
You know, sending.
I'm fully in support of making sure they give us the money and keep it moving. I think that is. One of our highest priorities as a city directly dissected at a highway with Lake Point. It needs to stay on there.
Do you think that?
Let me redo this. Let me do these separately. Sorry. So let's start with the highway eighteen. Widening and safety improvement from state route eighteen. Is there consensus to leave that on the priority list? Is your come up or?
Yes.
So one, two, three, four, five. Okay. So we'll leave that as priority. Now let's go to vehicular pursuits. It is currently on policy. Is there consensus to move vehicular pursuits from policy to the priority document? Five, six. That work?
Yes. So I just want to confirm. So council would like to move vehicular pursuits to priority.
Yep.
And then keep eighteen on.
Priority.
Okay, we'll do it.
Okay. Thank you all for that. All right. Next item up is new business item number six to discuss Republic Services two thousand twenty three solid waste rates. I will refuse myself. And I'm turning this over to our mayor, Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can you call me back or not? I will be in the night.
Yeah. Got a question? Don.
Thanks, Mayor Tim. Mayor Pro Tem Smith and council. Just a little brief update on the. Solid waste rate increases for going into twenty twenty three. With the inflation, we all are aware of the CPI for. Next year is nine point five four percent. And the tipping fee. Change, and that's from King County for depositing, you know, solid waste there. So that rate also went up by nine point five two percent. So those increases are already part of the contract. So it's not any action that we need to. Do tonight or council needs to do on the, on the blue sheet, the, the chart that's there on page two ten. Those rates for twenty twenty three include the tipping fee increase and the. Rate CPI increase for that. So those are part of those already in that. What's not included in that is the recycling processing charge. That is something that's not part of the contract and is something that council has to agree to extend. The current. Recycling processing charge will end at the end of this year unless council. Extends, and that was a request from Republic Services. For that to also has an increase. It goes for residential. It goes from a dollar ten per residential customer per month. To a dollar eighteen per residential customer per month. And then the multifamily commercial increases from three fifty two per cubic yard. To three ninety three per cubic yard. So the, the request from Republic Services. Is to extend that and increase the recycling processing charge as. As shown in the blue sheet, the increase to one eighteen and to three ninety three. So. Happy to. Answer any questions in regards to that, if anyone has.
Question. Go.
So what happens if we don't approve it? Does it go back to zero?
Uh, yes, it would actually go that if that recycling processing charge, obviously, like I said before, the CPI and the tipping fee will go in because we'll have, that's part of the contract. But the recycling processing charge would end and then that. Basically, right now, the dollar ten that is added to the rates right now would end at the end of the year and. Yeah, I mean, within, you know, as part of that. Now, you know, some previous, you know, discussions from. Republic and their, their, as they've come here before, some of that is as part of the contract, they'll, you know, it's. Outside of the contract. Some could argue and they have argued that that's, you know, as the duration of this contract. There are some unknowns and things like that that are. Wasn't aware, you know, when this was put together. So some of those commodities has changed. That's the reason why. They're asking for this and that's has been their argument in the past of why they're asking for that now. But again, that's their. That's their request and where that's coming from. I don't know if, if Mark has any more information he wants to add to that, but that's. Hopefully that answers your question.
So the question of us is, would, would we approve the increase from one ten to one eighteen?
And actually extending because you, because like right now it ends at the end of this year. So we, so council would have to extend it again another year and increase it. So. So it's both of those are occurring. So extending it to all of twenty twenty three and it's an increase from one ten to one.
Couldn't they extend and not increase?
Yeah, that was my next question. So that's an option. So there are really three options. And then my other question was, if we choose not to extend it, this is just then a burden. On the public to bear, would they have no recourse if they can't recoup from us?
Yeah. And, and Mark, I don't know if you, as far as recourse or anything like that, if you want to speak to that. I mean, whether that's renegotiation or things along those lines. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Don, I think you've explained, excuse me, I think you've explained it really well this evening and. Essentially with these, this is a rate increase from these recycling charges that they're requesting to keep up with the different issues that they're facing. And if these aren't approved, this will likely result in them reevaluating what their rates may look like in the future. Based upon making sure that they're covering all their costs. So I, I don't have the way, how they're going to recoup it. I, that's kind of up for them and their business as a business decision. And for council, this is a policy decision. Based upon something that's allowed under the contract, but it must be agreed to.
Is there any more?
So.
Christine?
So according to Mark, we actually cannot separate or can we, but then have to go and renegotiate.
Say that, say that again. I'm sorry.
So according to Mark, we still can separate, approve the extension, not approve the increase, but then it would affect our, our future negotiation.
I think that either way, if like. If it's extended and maybe it's obviously that gap, the, that is not increased to, that would probably change how they're looking at maybe the future and negotiating that. Obviously, all those factors would come into play on how they would view that. But. That would be again, up to them, how they would respond to that based on whatever counsel chooses.
Right. And thank you for clarifying that, Don, because council, I, I wasn't speaking to whether council has the authority to split those two up. Council could just extend. What it currently has, it could agree to the requested rate increase. And extend it for another year, or it could also decide not to extend and let it expire as, and go back to zero.
Other questions? So hypothetically, if we did not extend this, does recycling go away in Covington then?
No.
So they just continue to pick up, but they, so, so the contract ends the end of the year or this section of it.
It's just an additional processing charge for them to, like, so the, the recycling commodity, for instance, as they've said, is, is it's costing them more to process recycling, that type of thing. So they're trying to recoup those, those dollars, right? It wouldn't change that they still have to pick up that or it's part of the contract and that type of thing. It would just be a matter of they're taking that as a, at a loss based on their numbers. And so. How they would recoup that or how they would come back to us or whatever with that. I, I, I can't speak to that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Did they provide, I mean, I looked at the materials that were sent. Did they provide us any more on? Why they need to raise the rate? Last time we talked, if I remember, it was due to the, the markets kind of. Drying up in China for some of these recyclables. Is that still the case?
There's been some fluctuations as far as that still being the case in that. I think some of it again is that the commodity, some of it is just inflations and stuff too with, with that as well. I can sure. Get more information for, um, from them on that, on that item and come back to council if that's. Something that council desires or get more clarity, or even if, if Republic needs to come and provide more information as well. Obviously, time is of the essence at some extent before the end of the year. Otherwise, there will be a. You know, either a gap or something along that. For that time. I think there is a period of time where, where notice is to go out to for changes as far as rates and stuff too for ratepayers. So. I don't remember the date, the, the amount of time for that too, but I know that it's getting pretty tight.
Good. Have any question? Do we want to take action?
I would, I move that we extend the rate, but leave it at one ten.
So you're moving to extend the deadline.
Extend the deadline.
December thirty first, twenty twenty three, but leave the rate at the same.
I would almost put a contingency in there for next year.
So hold on, I think we have to have a second on. So it doesn't look like we have a second. So that motion, if I understand, doesn't, doesn't go forward. Okay.
I, I'm in support of allowing the, the aids and increase and extending it. I mean, we produce a ton of waste and recycling and as a partner to the planet. We really need to continue. Yes, I am moving to increase the recycle processing charge to one eighteen per month from one ten per month for single residential. And three ninety three per cubic yard for multifamily commercial through December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Sorry.
You want to repeat that? Did you get that second? Is that a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Moved by Jennifer and seconded by Debbie. Jeffrey, do you want to speak?
Sure, yes. Now I will. Sorry about that. Yeah, I mean, they were here and they went in to great detail about the issues with recycling and the, the associated commodity. We understand the problem. It's eight cents per month. And if it allows. What we're putting in the garbage to actually be recycled into something else. That is our duty as a city to protect the planet and to protect our community. As corny as it sounds for generations going forward, but that's, you know, that's the reality of it.
Well, if their costs are increasing because of CPI. And it's a burden that they'll bear if we don't increase. Then I, I think as Don said, and maybe even Mark could open up further problems down the road in negotiations for services with them. So. It's just what we need to keep them whole and keep us. Doing what's right with our plastic work and.
Anybody else want to speak for or against the motion? I would just mention, I recently toured the landfill and. Compost facility out there. And a big issue is some of the spoiled recycle. People mixing and stuff that shouldn't be recycled. So I know that's part of the issue is just the. Labor it takes to make sure that the stuff that's being recycled can be recycled. So I'm sure those costs are going up. I'm not going to ask for it now, but in the future, yeah, more detail on what those potential costs are. I mean. I do trust and you have heard in the past, but it would be good to get more detail just to tell us, these are the costs that are going up to side CPI. I mean, I do. Appreciate that. So. Any, yeah.
No.
I'm sorry. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to. Allow Republic Services to increase the recycling processing charge to one eighteen per month for single family residential and three point nine three. Three dollars and ninety three cents per cubic yard for the multifamily commercial through December thirty first, twenty twenty three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So the motion pass. Is that five to one? Okay. Thank you. Should we get, thanks, Jeff, if you haven't skipped out?
That would be such an. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Welcome back.
Thank you. All right, that takes us into future agenda items. We, does council have anything they'd like to see on a future agenda? Looking at. This Saturday is our budget workshop at eight o'clock. And then we have. A joint meeting with human services on November eighth. And our council meeting at seven o'clock on November eighth. Council, anything else they'd like to see in the future? Let's move to council staff comments. We'll start with chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. We have a coffee with a cop on one. November second at ten AM from still noon at Starbucks across from Panda Express. Love to see people there. That's an open invite to the community. So I, we'd like to come enjoy some coffee with some police officers. We have that opportunity. Uh, we had a nice meeting last night with, uh, nice people here at the open house, as you'd say. We talked about, I hope to save you. It was a great night. So thank you.
Thank you. Ethan?
No comments from me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Don?
No comments from me either. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Selena?
No comments from me either. Thank you.
Thanks, Selena. Casey?
I got something. Actually, it is on the audit. We finished the first part of the audit on Friday. So we received our letter, first part. There's two parts. This, the letter that we got on Friday was three months later than it was last year. So this first part of the audit has taken. Four months and they are just starting the second part of the audit. I anticipate they'll be here till the end of the year. But I'm excited. We got our letter on Friday. So the first part is, is done. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark? You always put me, you had Mark before you.
Thank you, Mayor. There is an executive session tonight to discuss real estate acquisition pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty one one zero sub one sub little b. And just as a reminder to please state the time that you'll leave, leave will be done, and that's all I have, nothing further.
Thanks, Mark. Regan?
Just a reminder to council, as you know, each year, Jim Reed, our facilitator for our annual summit, helps put together that agenda, so he'll be reaching out soon, so prepare for that. I think he wants to call you each and set up a Zoom meeting with each of you, so please respond to him so that he can get that rolling. We, we shared several ideas with him, so we've got the start of an agenda, so that would be great. And also, this month, we actually have two of our employees, our team members here in Covington, reached twenty-five years with the city. Can you believe it? She started when she was eight. That's amazing. And then Krista's mom, so. So anyway, that, that's really cool for, you know, we're a young city and they've been here since the get-go. Noreen reaches that next month, December. So kind of exciting. We, we like having her.
That's great. Congratulations. Thanks, Regan. Krista?
I'm just looking forward to the budget workshop on Saturday. I'll be there.
Thanks, Krista. Christina?
I will ditto that and look for us.
Thank you.
I just feel really proud at all the outreach that we've been doing as a council with staff, the Let's Talk Streets, with the open houses. I know it's been a lot on the part of staff to organize these events and attend, and some of them are working long days and split shifts, and we all have our day jobs too. So I just, I feel like we've just been doing a lot to try to outreach and connect with our community, and I think it's great that we're all pulling together to do this, to try to bring us all together. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Sean?
Yeah, just a couple of things to reiterate, reiterate what the chief said. Last night's public safety meeting was well-attended. I think we had about a dozen people from the community come out and talk and provide feedback on things that we can do to increase and improve community safety from traditional things like hiring police officers, but also to providing additional resources for homelessness and food security. So you know, what I, I found most encouraging is that as we went through it, the public was very appreciative of the detail that we went into and basically are explaining the situation and the conditions and restrictions that we have. And so we're basically looking to them to help us come up with ideas. So I would ditto what Beth said. I think we're doing a, a good job on reaching out and just taking the time and just having twelve people come out on a Monday night to talk public safety, and I think is encouraging. So next, I really appreciate the passing the RFA benefit charge. And the fire department provides a valuable service that comes out of value. And so I know they will appreciate our support on that. And then finally, my attended event last Friday for Colin Pritchard. Colin, if you remember, was a senior at Kent Lake High School who passed away over a year ago from what's called human sarcoma, which is a childhood cancer. His parents have taken that tragedy and tried to turn it into a positive. They created a guild for raising funds for research into childhood cancers. I think they've already raised twenty thousand dollars. They had an event last Friday at CCP and about sixty people turned out to celebrate Colin's life, but also to raise awareness about the need for additional research. And so on November fifth, Colin was a big basketball player. They're going to have a three-on-three tournament at Kent Lake. It's open to high school students and adults and co-ed teams as well. I've got a flyer here, and there's a QR code if you're interested in building a team. I'll give this to the city, you guys can put that up somewhere. So anyway, it's for a really good cause, and Colin was a resident of Covington, so.
I'll just second or third everything that's been said about the, the outreach, community programs, the, the street talk. And then last night, I was also able to attend the public safety workshop or open house that we had. I was actually surprised that we only had twelve people. I, I came in expecting this room just to be packed because it's such a, a big thing for everyone. However, the people that were here had good input and I like what Regan said, we were talking about it afterwards, and he said he saw that as a good thing because people must not have a lot of complaints or problems if they're, they're not here. They were also very receptive to any tax we may need to assess to, to get the police. They said we need to refund the, the police department, not defund. So they, they were in support of whatever we needed to do, so.
You know, when everybody else's same streets talk were fun, very engaging. We discussed, just so you know, so when you see it, we're going to do a Timber Lane sidewalk tour. So we're somehow going to relight the many discussions that have been had over the years to come up with a solution for the residents. Not that just live in Timber Lane, but that's a main thoroughfare in our community. So we had lots of input, Regan and I, so look for that at some point in the future and bring really, I don't know, a first aid kit with you. They're pretty bad. Also, I wanted to commend the Parks and Rec Department for handling all the, the smoke situation really well. As you guys all know, my kids participated in, in all of the great programs that the city offers and multiple weekends were impacted and the communication was great. Games were shortened. I, I just feel like it was handled really well. And then lastly, because it's October, and I was thinking about it, because I'm on Brian and I, and I don't talk a lot about it because, you know, Covington doesn't have a lot of skin in the game. However, it's October, you should go see some salmon. I stopped, I saw one of those little, look at salmon, like signs on one sixty-nine off the Cedar River this weekend, coming back from being out of town. And what a great, they had naturalists there telling you anything you wanted to know about the salmon. They were there. The males and the females doing their thing, and it was super interesting and what a great connection and reminder to this amazing thing that's really made to the area around us. So I totally encourage everyone to do it. It was awesome.
So first, I want to give an update from Skip. They, our last meeting was last week. We approved the job posting for the new to replace Angela, and we are hoping to get that out ASAP. And the city of Auburn will be again the host for this person. And they moved the moved it from one pay level to another because after discussions between Human Resources, Mayor Bacchus and Angela, they decided that the position was actually a little higher level than what they had originally thought. So there is that. Other things that were discussed was that there are three projects, three projects being discussed with the advisory committee for funding. I will get more details to you guys all when they come up with a decision on which ones they would like to fund or how they would like to fund. But the board will see the recommendations by either our November meeting or December meeting. So my, one of the final decisions I get to make on Skip before Christina takes over. And then, starting next spring or next, next year, they will start to talk with the cities who have contributed to the housing fund, which is fourteen oh six funds, which Covington does not put into there. But I did remind them that they might want to actually expand those talks to the cities who have the fifteen ninety funds because that's a lot of money, and that's what Covington is kind of earmarked towards helping Skip with. So if they would like funding from us, they should come and talk to us about this. And you could see in their faces like, oh yeah, that's right. So you could tell that they forgot that we would actually help them with funding things. But just because we don't do it the way they would like us to, it's different. Anyways. So expect some information on that, hopefully in the next four months about funding, and whether or not Skip will be coming to talk to us. We, at PIC, at our last meeting, we discussed the Behavioral Health Crisis Care Centers levy proposal that Executive Constantine has kind of put out there. They're talking about having five new crisis care centers. They would be regional areas, so northeast, south, and centrally located. Where those are going to be still yet to be determined, how those are going to be still yet to be determined. This is still very new. King County Council doesn't plan to vote on putting it on a levy until next February, roughly. So it could be on about as soon as April or, who knows, August of next year. But it's, they're studying the ideas of where to put them and get all the information to us for that. Jennifer, you look at this.
I'm curious if there's been any discussion on with staff these centers. I mean, we have existing organizations that cannot provide the care because they don't have the staffing, so just creating more buildings doesn't make sense to me.
That is not in the forms that I was given, so I'm going to assume no. Other than that, it's Halloween's next week. Keep an eye out for the kids out there. Have some fun. And don't hand out pencils, hand out candy, come on. The more king-size bars I can steal from my children, the better.
Thank you, Joe. For Sound Cities, we had our finance, as your treasurer for SCA, we had our finance meeting this morning, and we have a balanced budget that we are presenting to the board next month. Once the board approves it, that will go to the annual meeting on November thirtieth, which will be in Renton. They haven't sent out the RSVPs for that for the next SCA network channel will be November thirtieth in Renton. And then our new executive director, David Hoffman, is starting November first. Will be great. That'll take some pressure off of staff and the executive committee. With that, we
I just wanted to thank the students in the audience for coming out today. Appreciate it. The meeting is almost over. You guys did really good. There'll be an opportunity to comment if you want. And then we're going to an executive session where we leave the room, and you guys don't have to stick around if you don't want to after that. So just FYI. Thank you.
And that brings us to our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening?
Opportunity.
I just want to say hi.
All right. And there's nobody online that has, so with that, that closes our public comment periods. And we will move into executive session to discuss real estate acquisitions pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero subsection one, subsection B for approximately Ethan?
I would say fifteen minutes.
For approximately fifteen minutes, meaning that we would come back at nine, say nine forty-five. Coming out of executive session, there is no further action, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending tonight.